So anyway, part one today, how does chanting work? The next subsection is going to be called a universal chant. Then actual proof, I always talk about this, yeah? We can talk about kumbaya and singing and chanting all day long, but if you're not receiving the proof from the universe, from the cosmos, you're wasting your time and you should, you might as well just be on Tinder on this Wednesday instead of being with me. You have to actually receive the proof from the universe yourself. Yeah, actual proof. The next section is a scientific age, which is beautiful for me. I'm reading a lot of books right now about how science and Buddhism are, you know, go hand in hand and actually Buddhism is, is, and science, they're kind of like making each other even more valid. Then we're going to talk about the Buddhist explanation of chanting, how chanting makes a difference, religion and science, two special crazy ones there. And then finally, is understanding consciousness the answer? So get your highlighters out, there's going to be little bits and bobs I'll tell you to highlight. I've already highlighted what I feel is relevant and copied it into the PDF. So let's jump straight in, man. You ready? Yeah, we all good?
Yeah.
Alright, cool. Let me share the screen. So. Uh, can we see this? Yeah? Thank you, Angelina, you're amazing. So we're going to go straight in with chapter three, Nam Myo Horeng Ekyo, the roar of the lion. When once we chant Myo Horeng Ekyo, with just a single sound, we summon forth and manifest the Buddha nature of all Buddhas, all existences. This blessing is immeasurable and boundless. And that's from a Gosho called Those Initially Aspiring to the Way. So that is a quote from Nitrin Daishonin explaining Nam Myo Horeng Ekyo. So part one, how does chanting work? According to tradition, early in the morning of April the 28th, 12:53, Nitrin climbed to the top of the hill at Kasagomori adjacent to his lodging in his home temple of Shijoji. The spot affords a magnificent view of the cedar-clad hills rolling towards the Pacific Ocean. And as the sun began to rise, the 32-year-old Nitrin chanted Nam Myo Horeng Ekyo for the first time. Although the details of this moment have not been retained in his writings, Nitrin did state, "I, Nitrin, at the beginning of the summer, in the fifth year of the Kensho era, began chanting them Nam Myo Horeng Ekyo." If you happen to have the opportunity to visit Shijoji, you will find a fine modern statue of Nitrin placed on a modern, on a man-made predomitory. Look closer at the foot of this cliff and you will find a far more ancient statue of Nitrin, which marks the more realistic position of the first Daimoku. Daimoku is the invocation of chanting of Nam Myo Horeng Ekyo. So it just means chanting Nam Myo Horeng Ekyo. "My first experience at Kasagomori was perhaps not quite as profound as that first invocation, for as I chanted the Daimoku across the hills of southern Chiba, my eight-year-old daughter was screaming at the bottom of the hill about how bored she was." A universal chant. "That spring, Nitrin set into motion a revolutionary practice and interpretation of Buddhism. This simple method of chanting the phrase Nam Myo Horeng Ekyo has impacted on millions of lives, improving not only their inner well-being, but transforming their situation for the better." The independent Pan-Buddhist writer Clark Strand, in his book Wake in the Buddha, tested a single question. "Did Buddhism have a teaching that was so universal it could pass quickly from person to person without getting stopped in its tracks, leaping across national, ethnic, economic, and even religious boundaries?" Strand concludes that the SGI has such a teaching in its central focus on the dignity of life. But I would like to answer that the chanting of the Daimoku has likewise transcended these boundaries across the world. The incredible diversity of SGI is testament to this effort and at its foundation is the chanting. J M Walsh, the scholar, author, and SGI USA member, posits that there is a certain linguistic logic to the phrase which makes it universal. The nam of the Daimoku is Sanskrit and Myo Horeng Ekyo is a Japanese phonetically derived version of the ancient Chinese title of the Lotus Sutra. Unlike Chinese, Japanese is a non-tonal, so that meaning is not derived from the pitch, making it far easier to chant. Likewise, the phonemes in Nam Myo Horeng Ekyo are associated with nearly all languages. By contrast, Sanskrit recitation required highly accurate pronunciation, which involved trainee Hindu priests spending years to learn to pronounce correctly. The universality of Nam Myo Horeng Ekyo has therefore a practical basis, which means a Bolivian, an Eskimo, and a Yigandan can all pronounce it without too much difficulty. Furthermore, the British biologist Rupert Sheldrake has looked at the universal significance of chanting and singing to all life. Sheldrake illustrates the fundamental aspect of the use of vibration and sound by citing Charles Darwin's description of the animal kingdom. Not only does he refer to more obvious examples such as frogs and birds, but also many insects, including spiders, which produce rhythmic sounds, usually by rubbing together special structures on their legs. In fact, from the specific rhythms of woodpeckers to singing mice and the call of gibbons, sound and rhythm are an elementary part of the natural sound, uh, natural world. Sheldrake considers the chanting of mantras as a way in which a group can enter into a literal resonance with each other and into a resonance with those who have chanted the same chants before. He also looks at the mechanics of chanting. Vows create a continuous flow of air. With the mouth open, while consonants generally block or obstruct the flow of air, though notably N and M just divert the air through the nose. The vowel sounds are elemental in a chant, in a chant in creating a specific pattern or vibration. Nam Myo Horeng Ekyo is notable in incorporating four different key vibrational vowel sounds, E, R, and O, plus M and N, which also have specific vibrational effects. It is worth discussing at this point that the nam is fully pronounced in writing as namu. Some Nitrin sects still pronounce the u. One SGI member I knew got very caught up with the existence of the u sound and would pronounce it in a way that meant he was out of rhythm with others chanting with him. This resulted in him and his partner stopping chanting altogether, uh, in the end. On this issue, it is first of all important to clarify that Nitrin often refers to Myo Horeng Ekyo, the title of the Lotus Sutra, as the key fundamental law and the phrase to be chanted, as in the quote at the beginning of this chapter. The nam, or namu, is the relational marker, a sign of respect towards the mystic law, Myo Horeng Ekyo. I like to use the metaphor of a swimming pool. The nam is the diving board into the swimming pool of the law of life, Myo Horeng Ekyo. In that sense, the use of nam is acceptable. Together they form the usual, uh, the essential phrase to chant. Secondly, a Japanese final vowel sound such as a u is often unvoiced and this explains how namu naturally and unquestionably became nam in the chanting of the Daimoku. Finally, if you have ever tried chanting namu Myo Horeng Ekyo, you will find it does not flow on the free, free rhythm which makes nam Myo Horeng Ekyo so natural and after some practice effortless. The quality and quantity of Daimoku are therefore impeded by trying to emphasize the u. Actual proof, baby. So however easy, natural, or elemental the phrases to chant, it would be meaningless if it did not result in tangible benefits. So this is why we're all here. How can we get the tangible benefits? However easy, natural, or elemental the phrases to chant, it would be meaningless if it did not result in tangible benefit. Even more valuable than reason and documentary proof is the proof of actual fact, as Nitrin states. "In my 20 or so years of practice, I have experienced countless times when chanting has been proven to me. Some based on the positive causes that have derived from the wisdom, energy, and positivity which the chanting in the morning produced, others in which the synchronicity of events have been beyond my belief to happen in the normal course of events. On its broadest level, I can see how the trajectory of my life before chanting, prone to anxiety, depression, and the traditional nature of my work, transitional nature of my work, has transformed into a positive-centered and fundamentally happy life with a career I thoroughly enjoy. On the more specific level, here is an example from my work for the purpose of illustration. "After one year of practicing Buddhism, I decided to retrain as a primary school teacher. Prior to this, I had been working in an administration job and trying to make it in the music industry. In a newly qualified teacher's first year in the job, there were a number of hurdles to overcome and objectives one must fulfill in order to become a properly registered teacher. The year was extremely challenging for me as I was in sole charge of a class of seven-year-olds for the first time. In my first week in the job, I went out on the Friday night with some friends and was physically unable to speak due to the exhaustion. My morning Daimoku sustained me through those very difficult first few weeks, giving me the courage, hope, and life force to cope with the role. A series of observations of my teaching would take place in order for me to become a fully qualified teacher. The first one, by a visiting outside professional, did not go too well. It was therefore essential that my second observation went well to pass the year. I planned an ambitious math lesson and of course chanted copiously for it to go well. On the morning of the observation, I began to prepare the resources for the lesson, which would begin at 9:00 AM. It became apparent to me very soon that I should have prepared these the night before and did not have enough time to cut out and create all the items which were crucial for the success of the lesson. Chanting quickly, I frantically began what seemed like an impossible task, my heart sinking at the thought of the inspector walking into a half-ready lesson in 10 minutes' time. At that precise moment, two heads appeared around the edge of the classroom door, two older children asking if I had any jobs to do. This was of course precisely what I needed, but was all the more incredible because the school had a very strict policy that children were not allowed to enter the school before lessons starting at 9:00 AM. I had never before, nor would I ever after, have any children offering to do jobs for me before school. Suffice to say, between the three of us, the resources were prepared, the lesson was a success, and my teaching career was saved. The incredible synchronicity of this experience has been repeated on a number of occasions in different circumstances to me, something which did not occur before I had started chanting. This has brought me to the conviction that something more than a general good feeling resulting from chanting, leading to more positive actions and therefore more positive results, is at work here. In his book, The Buddha in Daily Life, Richard Corsten dedicates 127 pages to the meaning of Nam Myo Horeng Ekyo. And if you want to know more about that, the Buddhist meaning and the meat of what nammyo and rengay mean, that is the book. Richard Corsten, incredible man. And also, if you ever just write in Richard Corsten lectures onto YouTube, he's passed away now, but his lectures blow me away, like they're so incredible. Um, he'll literally just talk for like an hour. He's like the old general director of SGI UK, um, from like the 90s and 80s and stuff. We would not be looking at the multiple layers of significance of the phrase, interesting as that may be. Instead, we will be considering the question that nags in every Nitrin practitioner's head. How does the chanting actually work? So, a scientific age. In other chapters, we look at research that can provide an evolving perspective on aspects of Nitrin Buddhism. The chanting of Nam Myo Horeng Ekyo, however, is a timeless and unchanging crux at the heart of the practice, but our understanding of chanting, how it functions, and the science behind it is evolving. This chapter will look at the development and studies within and outside SGI that can bring us closer to understanding what happens when we chant. We live in a scientific and knowledge-based society. Scientific innovation has transformed human life in the last 150 years in many ways for the better, and as a result, science underpins the way we understand our world and our place in it. It is therefore only natural that we look to pointers in science which might explain the antidoteal evidence of the actual proof of chanting. SGI Daisaku Akida has stated, "President Toda predicted that 200 years later, everyone would finally understand the significance of our efforts." He also said, "As science progresses, the validity and correctness of Buddhism will be increasingly borne out." The Buddhist explanation of chanting. We will look at how this statement from Toda is increasingly coming to fruition. Before we do so, let us examine how the chanting of Nam Myo Horeng Ekyo has been explained within the tradition, starting with Nitrin. In his copious writings, there are many expositions of the functioning of the Daimoku. What is more important is that by chanting Nam Myo Horeng Ekyo alone, you can attain Buddhahood. It will no doubt deep, uh, it will no doubt depend on the strength of your faith, but to have faith is the basis of Buddhism. It's like I say every week, if you hit your bell with a toothpick, you will receive that vibration back. But if you have a bell hammer, you will really like, if your faith is strong, you will receive proof much faster and much clearer. If you're chanting only because, you know, this guy on Zoom told you to, you're not going to receive actual proof. You've need, you've got to spark the universe yourself. We reveal this highest life state in the act of chanting, but equally, our openness, receptiveness, and focus, in other words, our faith, have an impact on the outcome. Nitrin also, in many of his writings, clarified that the phrase is our life itself. So Nam Myo Horeng Ekyo is our life itself. The entity of Myo Horeng Ekyo in all of its splendor. Just what is this entity? If we hope to answer this, we must say that it is the eight-petalled white lotus that is the true nature of our own lives. Since this is so, then the essential nature of our own lives is Myo Horeng Ekyo. So the Daimoku not only reveals a life state within us, but it is also the most essential aspect of our lives. This all-incompassing element of the phrase is fully explained by Nitrin in his writings, the entity of the mystic law, that all beings and their environment are themselves entities of Myo Horeng Ekyo. And that this phrase physically embodies the mystic law of life, the true aspect of all things. The writer J M Walsh points out that Nitrin repeatedly refers to the mystic law, transcending, uh, transcending individual minds. For example, Nitrin instructs a follower to chant to the Gohonzon with the prayer that all the Buddhas of the universe will take possession of his body to assist him. Walsh writes, "Read with the understanding that the eternal Buddha, the Dharma realm, the Lotus Sutra, Nam Myo Horeng Ekyo, and our lives are all one." We can grasp that Nitrin is referring to the workings of a universal and compassionate Buddha, consciousness, uh, consciousness within our own lives. So this is like, I hope you're still with me. Like, this is, this is why Nitrin Buddhism is practicing Buddhism to the true intent of what Shakyamuni thought. There's many other forms of Buddhism that believe like the sutras and the law of life is outside of themselves and they only have attributes of that, when it is very clear in Buddhism here. All of this is the workings of our own life, all of it, like the Buddha, Nam Myo Horeng Ekyo. The life itself is all within us. So has this concept of a universal, all-incompassing law embodied in Nam Myo Horeng Ekyo been developed in the modern era, most notably by the president of the Sokogakai? Daisaku Akida and Jose Toda before him have re-clarified and elicited this principle in accessible modern terms. In his novelized account of the growth of the Sokogakai, Akida writes, "Simply put, Nam Myo Horeng Ekyo is the fundamental law of the entire universe, the ultimate force that moves everything." Akida has also expounded the fusion with the greater self as a way of an explanation. "This greater cosmic self is related to the unified and integrating self that Jung perceived in the depths of the ego." It is also similar to Ralph Waldo Emerson's universal beauty, to which every part and particle is equally related, the eternal one. A fusion with the entire universe is further illustrated in the following well-known passage. "Gongyo and Daimoku are a ceremony in which our lives commune with the universe. During Gongyo, through our faith in the Gohonzon, we vigorously infuse the microcosm of our individual existence with the life force of the whole macrocosm of the entire universe." If we do this regularly, each morning and evening, our life force is strengthened. So just so people want to like, when we chant as Buddhists, Nam Myo Horeng Ekyo, it's called Daimoku or Gongyo. Gongyo is a slightly extended version, but let me read this one more time. What are we doing when we chant as Buddhists? Fundamentally, take away everything. What are we doing when we sit here and chant Nam Myo Horeng Ekyo? So let me, let me like reword this in my own way. "During the chanting of Nam Myo Horeng Ekyo, through faith in our highest self, we vigorously infused the microcosm of our individual existence with the life force of the macrocosm of the entire universe." So I hope that made a bit more sense. Akida also illustrates this point with modern analogies, most notably of radio waves. I love this one here. "The air around us is filled with radio waves of various frequencies. While these are invisible, a television set can collect them and turn them into visible images. The practice of chanting Daimoku to the Gohonzon aligns the rhythm of our own life with the world of Buddhahood in the universe. It tunes our life, so to speak, so that we can manifest the power of Buddhahood in our very being." And that's what we're doing all the time, man. That's the point of chanting, so that we can literally infuse our life. We can rip ourselves out of them three survival chakras. You know what I mean? Like the root, all of we rip ourselves out, we come into the heart space and higher and, um, and then we're able to commune with the highest vibration in the universe. As a Buddhist, we call it Buddhahood. Um, and by chanting, we are able to fuse ourselves with the macrocosm of the universe because never forget, we are the entire universe having a human experience wrapped up in blood and flesh. So when you can remember that, when you have faith in that, that's what it means to have faith in the Gohonzon. I know we're using Buddhist words, but faith in the Gohonzon means having faith in your highest self, your best potential. And then when you have faith in that and then you're chanting Nam Myo Horeng Ekyo, you're, you're becoming in tune with the highest potential of the universe and you're lifting, you're ripping yourself out of them three lower chakras. And boy, if I wasn't doing that every morning, I'd be some grumpy guy right now, trust me. Cause life is intense. So chanting, making a difference. Open any SGI magazine from around the world and you will be drawn to the personal experiences of countless individuals who share how chanting and Buddhist practice has made a powerful difference in their lives. An emphasis on material change as well as spiritual change is synopsis with the Sokogakai's interpretation of Nitrin Buddhism, for which it has faced criticism in the past. On a philosophical level, SGI Buddhism sees no fundamental separation between the material, physical, and the unseen and the spiritual. In that sense, material benefit and value created from it resulting from the chanting are not a surprise, or is not surprising. Furthermore, Nitrin himself was very much focused on worldly concerns. His career-defining salvo at the authorities of the day entitled "On Establishing the Correct Teaching for the Peace of the Land" is an epistle to solve the famines, disputes, and disasters which were afflicting 13th century Japan. Distrust of material benefit may come in part from the separation of the spiritual and material rooted in Christian belief systems. In addition, Clark Strand considers that the criticism often comes from upper-middle-class Buddhists or European descent who have rarely had to worry about money or material security and points out to them the hypocrisy of criticizing others for wanting the very things that they already have and therefore take for granted. "Today, when met with comments like, 'They chant for money,' I answer that while financial security is certainly an issue for some, we shouldn't let that distract us from the fact that SGI members also chant for the happiness of friends and family, for human rights and human dignity, and for the equal treatment of minorities." But it's very important to make sure that you're chanting for wealth and stuff, you know? This idea that a Buddhist or a spiritual person can't be driving a Range Rover is an absolutely, you know, clapped idea. You know, we are of this earth, we are 3D humans, we deserve to be able to move around in style, you know? And when I'm thinking about the Range Rover and I'm chanting for the Range Rover that I want, I'm not thinking about four topless girls in the back and like lines of cocaine in the front seat. Like, I'm, I'm thinking about taking like five young black kids to Taplo Court so I can introduce them to the big Gohonzon, you know? So like, we deserve to have these things as well, you know? And don't ever think, and if any spiritual teacher is trying to tell you like, you've got to transcend money, that's a lie. So, uh, where was I? My chanting has certainly changed in its focus over the years. At age 25, I had a long list of material aspirations, whilst at 45, my chanting is primarily directed towards my family, friends, and fellow members and creating value in my environment. One of the first, one of the very first determinations I chanted about was to have a girlfriend. Having been dumped by my long-term girlfriend more than a year prior to starting practicing, just over a week after I began chanting regularly, I went to a party at my previous boss's house and a girl asked me out on a date. Due to the fact that this had never happened before, or since, I felt that this was my first taste of actual proof. At the time, it almost felt like magic, but on reflection, I can see that I went to that party in a very different life state than I would have without the chanting. Instead of the mildly depressed and anxious person I had been, I was energetic and glorious, dancing away, and I'm sure it was this positive change which drew a positive response in my environment. And I am sure that it was this positive change that drew a positive result, response in my environment. Super important sentence, that one. Religion and science. Overall, Nitrin and Akida's explanation of the workings of chanting focus on a fusion between the individual and a greater entity of the mystic law, which could equally be termed the universal consciousness or spiritual force. Recognize though that that spiritual force or the entity, the mystic law, is not outside of ourself, we are simply fusing with it. I remember once, and I'm going to pause here for a split second, I was at Speaker's Corner. And, um, I was at Speaker's Corner once and I was having a conversation with like the Muslims there. And I asked them, "Do I have the same attributes as Allah?" Like Allah, am I, do I have the same attributes as him? And he made it very clear, "No, no, no." He basically said, "I'm a piece of shit who just needs to look up to Allah." And like Allah will never, you will never have the same power as him. So, uh, and this is the same with a lot of Abrahamic religions and stuff. And, and, and I mean, that's their belief and I'm not here to disrespect their belief. It's not my belief though, and I know it's not your belief. I know that. There's no way that there's an external creator. And if he, and if he is, it's me. I created myself, yeah? Like, there's no way there's this brother or this sister or this non-gendered being out there on some mountain. And that is such an outdated 3D age of Pisces where you're seeing things. We have to understand that we are gods, that I'm trying to remind you all that we are gods. We're kings and queens and lions and lionesses. And the more that we remind ourselves that and encourage ourselves that, the more that we shine when we go back out into our local environments or when we go back out to support our friends and family that need us. You know, most of our families right now that might have different ideas about the way the world are going, they actually really are relying on us. You might not realize it, but all of the ancestors are relying on us. So that's why we need to just make sure that we're doing everything we can to rise up, have no doubts on who we are, because you're all kings and queens and, um, and all gods, living gods, like goddamn. Like, if you were to even just go into like a microscope under our skin, there's a whole universe going on in our biology. It's absolutely insane and incredible and amazing. And we forget the simplicity of how amazing and beautiful we are. And the more that we can just remember that, the more that we're going to be able to transform ourselves and change the world. Anyway, let me go back to the study. So. Religion and science. Oh, that was a pine needle. Anyway. Overall, Nitrin and Akida's explanation of the workings of the chanting focus on a fusion between the individual and a greater entity or mystic law, which could equally be termed a universal consciousness or spiritual force. Explanation based on material brain changes or physical health benefits which have been the basis of mindfulness, evidential claims in recent years are not the prime focus for SGI practice. So is there a similar evidential basis for the concept of a universal consciousness, a mystic law? A growing body of academics and research would state that there is. And in examining this question, we see Toda's prediction of a scientific basis to Buddhist philosophy being gradually fulfilled. Now, I know here he says that, um, you know, that it is not the prime focus of SGI members to, um, focus on like the brain, the brainwave changes and stuff. And that is the truth. And I, I, when I shakabuku people, which means introducing Buddhism to people, I try not to go too crazy on like, you know, the aura and, and brainwaves and stuff. But the more that I'm speaking to people in, outside of the SGI, like I am now, I'm starting to realize how important it is actually for a lot of us, because a lot of us are like, you know, Reiki healers or we know about energy work and we all know about chakras and meridians and stuff like that. It's really important that we actually do, you know, understand the science a bit of it. And one of the other future books I'm going to do is Change Your Brainwaves, Change Your Karma. I know, I'm sure a lot of you have seen me speak about this book. Change Your Brainwaves, Change Your Karma. And in this book, it's so beautiful, like, um, they take photos of the aura before chanting and they've got seven, you've got, you've got like seven main chakras, right? And they're all like really small and they're all like displaced all over the place. And the energy field around our body, the light energy field is all broken and, and stuff. And after just chanting 10 minutes, Nam Myo Horeng Ekyo, for 10 minutes, they take a photo of the light, of, of the aura using like very high vibrational light-sensitive cameras. Every single one of the, of the chakras are in alignment. Seven chakras, they've all swollen and all the patches in the aura have been filled in. So I've, I've been starting to introduce that knowledge to many people so that they can act, because some people actually need to know something tangible is happening and I respect that. You know, some of us, like me, I'm a fairy. I read, I read what Nitrin wrote 800 years ago and I was gone, zoom. I didn't need to have the proof. I didn't need to know that my chakras, I felt it, you know? I felt it in my body and I, and I received the actual proof. But I do recognize, not everyone's got my same background. My mom told me from, from a child, "Go out there and practice every religion and do everything." Like, so she never held me back, but if you're coming from a strict, you know, um, kind of like Christian or Catholic or Islamic background, you might find that slightly harder to, um, to understand. So, um. Yeah. Let me, let me, let me, let me go back. Sorry, I keep on getting distracted here. So. Yeah, but I was just saying, so that book is amazing because now people, they can basically see after, like, they can see what happens to them after chanting. And some people just need that like tangible evidence, like, okay, cool, like, yeah, well done, Nam Myo Horeng Ekyo, it's all mystical, but they actually want to know how is this helping me? So I definitely recommend that book to anyone. I've had the great pleasure to meet all these authors and dialogue with them. Susanna and Yukio Mitsudo, he actually speaks about Yukio in this book sometimes. But anyway, I'm going to, I'm going to carry on and anyone wants more information about that, follow me and I'll send you like, I'll send you photos. So such questions are important because as we mentioned earlier, we live in a scientific age. The historian Arnold Twain Bean states in his dialogue with Akida that he sees the gradual recession of Christianity in the West has been filled with three other religions. "The belief in the inevitability of progress through systematic application of science and technology, nationalism and conunism." Of these three, I would suggest that materialistic scientific belief system is the most all-pervading in the world today and in many ways rightly so. "As its evidential basis and clear progressive impact on our lives supersede the unquantifiable superstition of past ages." Religion and science could be considered to serve different purposes and many presume that there is no contradiction between them, that there is contradictions between them. Science looks at truth based on observational phenomena. Science looks at truth based on observational phenomena while religion and perhaps most explicitly Buddhism asks, "Does it create wellbeing and as a most meaningful and valuable creating life?" Science takes observable data and explains what things and processes do. The structures and tendencies of things, but not ultimately what they are, the intrinsic nature. The fact that an electron, a pineapple, a human being exists is still a wonderful mystery. A mystery which an underlying principle such as the mystic law explains in terms of different to materialistic science. Despite this difference in purpose from the outset, SGI Buddhism has embraced science as an important co-existent aspect of life, if not the only answer. Tetsunori Makuguchi, the founder of the Soka Gakkai stated, "I could find no contradictions between science, philosophy, which is the basis of modern society and the teachings of the Lotus Sutra." Recent scientific studies may be taking us even nearer to substantuating in scientific terms the amazing benefits of chanting and in doing so show us more clearly a universal aspect of Buddhist practice and philosophy. A middle way which is, which accommodates scientific knowledge and religion, religious intuition. The renowned scientist Stephen Hawking is famed for his search for a theory of everything. Indeed, the Oscar-winning film of this life, of his life is titled Just That. Yet Hawkins pointed out that even if an elegant equation could be found, the question of what brews fire into the equation to create a living universe would still be unanswered. In other words, however much we understand the mechanics of the universe, why is there anything at all? Is there a force, a dynamic, a ground of being on a non-physical level which manifests the universe? In Buddhist, in Buddhist terms, is there a dharma, a mystic law? So what they're saying here is, yeah, science is all great, but we try like, what is, what underpins all of that? And obviously as a Buddhist, it is the mystic law. Is understanding consciousness the answer? So this is the last subsection guys and I'll freestyle for a bit. Uh, so many philosophers and more recently academics have looked at consciousness as the key to validating the mechanisms or evidential law that underlines the universe. Consciousness is our inner awareness beyond the froth of our everyday thoughts which knows we exist. I love that sentence. A functional approach to consciousness which sees it merely as the result of brain mechanics has been widely recognized to be insufficient in explaining it. By examining the brain, scientists have been unable to prove why it should be conscious. This has led to a number of scientists and leading academics including Peter Fenwick of King's College, London University and Steve Taylor of Leeds Beckett's University to suggest that there is an increasing body of evidence to prove that consciousness lies outside the brain and that it is potentially fused or connected to a universal consciousness, which one might call a mystic law. And how beautiful is that term, man, the mystic law? It's not like some name of a god or some deity. It's like, yo, there's a law and it's pretty mystic. Let's call it the mystic law. Um, I love that. Uh, around 10 years ago, the Centre for Applied Buddhism at SGI UK headquarters, Taplo Court, invited Suzanne Blackmore, lecturer and writer on consciousness and Zen Buddhist practitioner, practitioner to give a talk. Blackmore began to give a series of examples relating to how illusionary our perceptions are, how we lack free will and that ultimately consciousness may be nothing but the colarets of our brain activity. The idea that we are looking out on a world which is a theatrical mirage produced by neural activity. At the time, I was impressed. It seemed a rational way of looking at things. One of the young women serving tea at the event was not so convinced. "I don't agree with her," she told me. "Despite our circumstances dictating our range of choices, I still have choice." "I chose this Buddhism." Her words made me reflect and I kept revisiting this point. "Are we mere automatons, machines with the appearance of awareness and choice or is there more?" The sense of that final point of consciousness, that deep awareness I felt, kept nagging at me. "After all, I am still thinking." What Blackmore was propounding was the reductionist or materialistic position on consciousness. Whether we are aware of it or not, a scientific materialism underpins our belief system in the West. The outstanding breakthroughs in understanding derived from the Newton laws of physics and the Darwin explanation of evolution increasingly brought science to the fore and a view of the universe not as, not as divinely planned but as a great machine. Matter was seen as the primary reality of the universe and anything including life itself could only be explained in material terms. As the English academic, author and lecturer, researcher in psychology, Steve Taylor has illustrated in his book, "Spiritual Science: Reductionism, Materialism Has Become a Belief System Like Any Other Belief System Including Those of Religion", to the extent that materialistic science will discount valid scientific evidence which runs counter to their beliefs of a materialist, material-based universe. Taylor suggests, suggests it can be a worldview that is bleak and barren, seeing ourselves as separate from one another with life being fundamentally purposeless and meaningless. Does a materialistic outlook contribute to the Hendenistic mindset of most of humanity and the willful destruction of the environment? Perhaps. In the last 30 years, neuroscience, the study of the workings of the brain, has grown vastly in its prominence as new imaging technology allows us to study the brain in ever more complexity. And yet, neuroscientists would admit that the entire endeavor has brought them no closer to understanding the mysteries of consciousness. The neuroscientist Anton Damaso wrote in an article for Scientific American, "One question towers above all. One question towers above all others in the life science. How does the set of processes we call mind emerge from the activity of the organ we call brain?" Taylor has pointed out that even the research aimed at mapping different states of brain, of mind to areas of activity of the brain is not generalizable and varies from person to person. So it's far from finding a source of consciousness within the grey matter itself. Akita, as President Asakawa Akita, considers the source of consciousness in his work, "Life: An Enigma, A Precious Jewel", noting, "Though much of the activity involved in consciousness takes place in the brain, consciousness is not necessarily confined to the brain. It is important to pick out a place in the body and say, 'This is where consciousness resides.'" Sorry, it is impossible, not important. It is impossible to pick out a place in the body and say, "This is where consciousness resides." In some respect, the workers of consciousness, mind and spirit are a mystery in, in real life as in dreams. If consciousness is extending outside the brain, then the endless endeavors of the neuroscientific community will never reap a solution. Because of the non-physical reality of consciousness, a growing body of evidence is challenging the materialistic concept of it. This movement of leading research and academics has been called pan-schism, pan-spiritualism or the intrinsic consciousness movement. In contrast, Peter Fenwick has termed the materialistic view as scientific fundamentalism. A belief that the understanding of material properties of the world is sufficient to explain everything. Regarding consciousness, Daniel Dennett's Neurobiology, Neurophilosophy characterizes this latter position. Dennett believes nothing is required to explain wider states of consciousness than neural activity in the brain and yet nothing near an explanation of how consciousness arises via the brain has been found. However, from a materialistic point of view, considering evidence that consciousness has a non-material quality outside of the brain goes against the basis of their belief and thus credible findings and reasonable hypotheses are rejected out of hand and their proponents are pillared. Scientific breakthroughs have met resistance throughout history when they challenged conventional thinking of the time. Benjamin Franklin was laughed out of the Royal Society when he brought up the subject of lighting conductors and when Stevenson proposed using locomotives on the Liverpool to Manchester Railway for the first time, Lohr and the men gave him, gave him evidence it was impossible to travel over 12, uh, miles per hour. Steve Taylor suggests that the brain does not produce consciousness, but rather it acts as a kind of receiver which transmits and cannibalizes universal consciousness or spirit force which it, which is equivalent to it. This universal consciousness acts more like a field than a localized point, transcending matter but interacting with it. The human brain being one of the most highly evolved receivers of it. Evidence of such a theory could lead to an understanding of chanting's connection, influence and results linked to this universal consciousness field. This also links with the Buddhist concept of the three truths. Key, the truth of temporary existence or ever-changing phenomena. Khu, the truth of non-substantuality or unmanifested potential in life. And chu, the truth of the middle way, true entity of being, the all-pervading essence of the universe, Nam Myo Horengei Kyo. Evidence for such a theory could lead to a greater understanding of chanting, chanting's connection to and impact of this universal consciousness field. So let us look at the science which points towards the credibility of Taylor's paradigm and the likelihood of a wonderful law of the universe, as the orally transmitted teachings of Nichiren often called it. So that's going to be next week, part two. Um. Let me get a drink quickly. So what have we discussed today? What is Nam Myo Horengei Kyo? And how does it work? From this first half, and without giving my kind of own explanation, it's kind of quite clear to me from what we've just studied that by chanting this phrase, we are very, we are able to connect our spirit, soul, whatever you want to call it, to the universe. Now, why is it super important as well that we do this? Right now, life is like a sea. Um, it's super choppy and we're on a boat, yeah? And by chanting and being able to, um, rise our vibration, drawing ourselves out of them three lower chakras, we, we, in a sense, we, we, we become our own lighthouse. We have, we, we are able to sail across the sea when there's so much like turbulence. So, um. Now, I've chanted many chants in my life. Um, I think I've mentioned this before, like I'm like an ordained, um, or like blessed teacher of, um, Bhakti Maga and, um, Sri Swami Vishwanda Hinduism chanting Om. Um, obviously there's Hare Krishna and all of these vibrations, by the way, uh, can help us, yeah? Be very careful what you chant though. Make sure that you're chanting something that someone's recommended because you could also go the opposite way, um, and you don't want to do that. But one thing I will say, um, from my heart to yours, there's nothing compared to chanting Nam Myo Horengei Kyo. And I've chanted loads. I've been in big groups. I've done it all. I've done Kumbaya. I've done the psychedelic. Nothing is more powerful than chanting Nam Myo Horengei Kyo and that's from my heart to yours. You may find something that you resonate with more and I love you so much for that. But, um, you know, we're talking about Buddhism with me and I'll give you an example like, man, like today I've been feeling kind of dense. I've been feeling kind of heavy, been feeling kind of ill. Um, I don't know if many people know about the ascension symptoms that are happening on the planet right now. As we are ascending and we are evolving and our chakras are expanding, uh, we're, we're receiving a lot of, um, ascension symptoms, you know, like, uh, one of them is just being so tired. I'm talking about like, I can just about get out of bed, you know, I'm super drained. Um, and so when I, I decided to chant and I chanted a bit later today than I usually would, suddenly I just feel like I've got a bit of a spring in my step, like I've maybe taken like a couple sips of Lucozade and suddenly like, there's like butterflies are just appearing around me and I'm sure you all know when butterflies appear, man, that's like a big sign, you know, just keep on moving, like there's, they're like, there's angels around you and, um, suddenly I just had all this like inspiration to go pick pine needles and, and for me and my mom in, in the park and stuff. But I wouldn't know, I wouldn't have had that life state had I not enchanted. So remember what Johnny said earlier in the book, he spoke about one of the first times he started chanting. You know, he, he asked the universe for, um, for a girlfriend. He went to a party and he recognized that, you know, wow, the gal is on me. But the reason the gal was on him is because it wasn't just the magic of chanting. It's because he had transformed his energy. He was no longer like, like a wet sausage. Like he was like, you know, it wasn't going to these like events, um, in like a depressed life state. He'd broken through and he was actually subconsciously not even realizing it. He was no longer in the lower three chakras. So suddenly you're putting out a different energy and this is another thing, I promise you now and it's a hard one to get your head around, but everything in your life is a reflection of you. Yeah, everything like, and I know it's fucking hard, man, to believe that, but it is. Um, and when you change, everything changes. When you decide, "I don't want to take this abuse no more for my abuser", everything changes. When you decide, um, "I want to break out of this limiting stagnant life state that I'm in right now", everything changes. Uh, two days ago, I had a massive conversation with my friend Jim, who's like an absolute vegan activist, yeah? And I said to him, "Bro, like, you know, calm down, stop calling people like", you know, like he literally be online going, "You're a fucking, you're an idiot if you're, if you're eating animals." And I was like, "Yo, you're calling me and all my family idiots, you know that and we're good people." And, and, and he said, anyway, I know in my heart though, I should not be eating this meat, man. Like I know when I'm like in a low life state, I'm feeling depressed, I'm feeling rubbish. And also it's not like I'm going to like Waitrose and getting that nice bill or some like 10-10 like organic chicken. I'm going straight to the chicken shop in South London. I want the, I want the most like dirtiest piece of chicken because that's how I, you know, I self-harm myself. And like, I'm realizing recently, I can't be judging people that self-harm themselves and shit because I do it myself. I might not slice my arm, but I'm, I'm putting in this poison. And how can I be talking about pine needle teas and, and, and drinking distilled water? But I'm having like 12 chicken nuggets in the evening, like it's just, it's not balancing itself out. So I knew I need to make a change. If I want to feel a higher vibration of happiness, because I've been feeling hella anxious recently and I don't know why. And I realized, whoa, it's no doubt because you've kind of like, I feel like I've come to an end of a segment and I'm like, bunny, I'm just going to eat what I want right now. That's the worst attitude I could have really had. Actually, I need to double down. We need to be doing more chanting, eating even more healthy right now because there's so much poison. And by the way, poison doesn't have to physically be poison. Energetic poison, observational energy is poison, you know, like people just always coming at you, asking for stuff is poison. So we need to make sure that we are just vibrating as high and as pure as we can. And one of the ways I know I can do that is by cutting out the meat. You know, I'm not saying I'm never going to touch it again, but I'm definitely saying, come on, Indigo, man, make an effort, like, you're feeling like shit, you're eating all this death, yeah? Like just make an effort to try and cut that out, man, slowly, you know? And, 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 and already I feel slightly more in tune. Um. So yeah, man, like, never think that like the chanting is the magic or like all the crystals that you're, you're, you're buying is the magic, yeah? No, no, no. The crystals are just an expedient. You're the magic. You are the magic, like. Crystals, yeah, they're helping. Chanting is definitely what infuses us, but we have to make the change. Luckily, when you chant, especially Nam Myo Horengei Kyo, you have the right tool to really lift yourself out of self-doubt, fear, worry. You know what I mean? So, um, whatever you take from this, even if it's not to chant, please, my brothers and sisters, my kings and queens, start to self-love yourself, start to pump energy into yourself. Because if you're with me right now, you're a reflection. That means you are a pillar. You are a pillar. If you're with me right now, you're a straight leader. I want you to know that. So just please, make sure that you're doing everything you can to just keep your vibration as high as possible. Don't get too, don't be too strict on yourself either. Um, do I have any questions? Anyone want to ask me anything? Nothing, no. We'll chant. Let me read today's guidance real quickly. So it's September the 8th. It says, "Without opposition, there is no growth. It is hard to argue with that logic. A state in which we are free from problems or constraints is not happiness. Happiness is transcending all opposition and obstacles and continuing to grow." That's what happiness means. I know I'm a good person. I know I'm a happy person. Doesn't mean that I don't want to scream at my phone sometimes or strangle someone. Yeah, it doesn't mean that. But it means, like it says in this last sentence, happiness is transcending all obstacles and oppositions and continuing to grow. So knowing that I will never stop, I'll keep on turning up to my Gohonzon and chanting means that I am in a state of happiness. I've entered the orbit of Buddhahood in the universe, if that makes sense. So if you've got beads, get your beads out. Yeah, go on, Joanne. I know you've got the beads. Yeah. And if not, um, let's just put your hands together, yeah? And let's chant for 10 minutes, uh, 5 minutes, sorry. Okay, what's the time? Alright. And this is something you can do, you know, when you're in your car, when you're in, when you're in your, when you're walking, you don't have to just do it statically, like really just try and get used to having that. So it becomes a mantra in your, like, it just comes second nature to you. And, um, if you, like I always say, if you ever want me to record for you specifically a prayer, uh, I'll do that for you. But yeah, 5 minutes, yeah, let's do this. Nam Myo Horengei Kyo. 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 Rengei Kyo. Nam Myo Horengei 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 Kyo. Rengei Kyo. Nam Myo Horengei 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 Kyo. Rengei Kyo. Nam Myo Horengei 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 Kyo. Rengei Kyo. Nam Myo Horengei Kyo. Nam Myo Horengei Kyo. Nam Myo Horengei Kyo. Rengei Kyo. Nam Myo Horengei Kyo. Nam Myo Horengei Kyo.